Good afternoon, I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 20th City of West Sacramento Planning Commission meeting, and we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd ask David Tilly if he'd lead us in the pledge. I'd ask everybody in the audience that has a cellphone to make sure it's turned off for the meeting. Anybody wishing to address the commission this evening, please fill out a slip there as you enter on your left over there, and if you'll fill them out and give them to Jennifer, she'll give them to me, and then we'll just, as we have the items, you can speak in the order that we received them. This would be the time where we'd have presentations by the public on matters that are under our jurisdiction but not on the agenda, so if anyone's in the audience this evening that would like to address the commission on a non-agenda-sized item, if that's the proper way to say it, now's the time to do that. Seeing none, we'll move on to consideration and approval of the minutes of August 6th Plan Commission meeting. Has everybody had a chance to read that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes of August the 6th.
All right, look for a second.
I'll second that.
Mr. Gavin, thank you, and I believe Commissioner Ledesma will be...
I'll abstain.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. Approval of Agenda Order, Mr. Rickla. I am gonna have to abstain from item number two. I live within a couple hundred feet of that project, so what I'd like to do when we go to the consent agenda, take those one at a time, we'll do item one, and then I'll leave, and I'll ask Commissioner Moore to take the lead, and then I'll come back after that. So, anything else regarding the Agenda Order that anybody wanted to talk about? Okay, Correspondents' and Staff Communications, Steve?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. You should have four pieces of correspondence in front of you tonight. First of all, a memo from David Tilly on Agenda Item Number Four, the Fulcrum Map, a memo from me on Agenda Item Number Five, the Green Building Ordinance, and then two additional pieces of paper on the Green Building Ordinance, the lead and the Build a Green Checklist, and we provided you with that basically because of one or two of the questions that came up back on June 18th regarding the checklist. Last night, the City Council met, the only item that was of a land use specific nature was that the council voted to extend the moratorium on medical marijuana for six months to give staff additional time to come back to them with an ordinance. This will be an ordinance that if it does include zoning provisions will also be coming to the Planning Commission within the next couple of months in a workshop and public hearing form as well. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Other than, I need to mention and remind you that our September 3rd meeting has been canceled, meaning that our next meeting will be the regularly scheduled meeting for the 17th of September.
All right, and just maybe you could clarify a little bit on the medical marijuana. Do we actually have a, an application?
We have one application that was filed prior to the July 8th moratorium. It was incomplete, but we have one application.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent agenda, and the first item is the Lot C, Tri-C Lot Merge at 520-524 Harbor Boulevard, and do we have any discussion about that? Then I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we affirm the zoning administrator action for item number one.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Seeing none, that's approved, and Charlie, I'm gonna turn this over to you for item number two.
I think we have to wait just one second till he removes himself. Item number two is a zoning administrator action for an extension of time for a previously approved project on Jefferson Boulevard, and I guess we'd look for any comments, questions, motion?
Commissioner Moore, I'd make a motion that we affirm the zoning administrator action.
Second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Gavin. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Now we'll patiently wait till our chairman returns.
It says, Mr. Morizini comes back, one item that we skipped in our agenda was item E, Disclosure of Expartee Communication, so Mr. Chairman, you may wish to ask?
Thanks, yeah, thanks for reminding me. Item E would be Disclosure of Expartee Communications. Does anybody have any communications with any of the applicants tonight?
Mr. Chair, I've had a previous meeting with the applicant for Agenda Item Number Four.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Levy. All right, we're gonna move on to item number three, and that's the Jefferson Plaza tentative parcel map number 4970, and David Tilly, you're gonna lead us in that, are you?
Yes, Chairman Morizini. As the Commissioner, we recall, this is a four lot parcel map at South Linden and Jefferson Boulevard at the Jefferson Plaza Shopping Center, which currently has a retail component and also the Montessori, Portside Montessori School. This project was brought before your commission in a workshop format at our meeting back in July, and at that time, the principal discussion was related to undergrounding of overhead utilities. As part of this project, initially, the applicant was requesting a waiver of that underground requirement per the city's municipal code, and it was discussed at length during that discussion, during that workshop. The applicant, and as can be expected, was concerned about the cost and extent of the undergrounding of the existing overhead lines along the Jefferson Boulevard frontage, and staff felt that the Planning Commission was sensitive to that, but however, was not prepared to waive the requirement completely. So after that meeting, the applicant and his designer met with planning and engineering staff regarding the extent of undergrounding and how could we accomplish the commission's direction while still attempting to maintain a control over the scope of that undergrounding effort. So the conclusion of that meeting, and as reflected, it's reflected in the conditions of approval on tonight's project, the applicant has agreed to do the undergrounding along Jefferson Boulevard frontage. That effort would likely consist of relocating the two existing poles on the Jefferson frontage to the northern and southern extremes of that property, and then undergrounding the lines in between. In order to do that, and the compromise that staff is recommending is that that be tied to final occupancy of the remaining building to be built on Lot C, Lot C, which is the middle parcel, or within two years, whichever comes first. And that requirement will be memorialized in a subdivision improvement agreement that will be subsequently entered into with the applicant and the city, and to ensure, as part of that subdivision agreement, a bond would need to be posted for that work. So that's, with that, that is the principal information we have to report on the project from our last workshop meeting. So tonight, formula, we do ask that you not approve the waiver request, but however, do approve the tentative subdivision map with the conditions as presented in the staff report.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David before opening a public hearing? I will conduct a public hearing if the applicant is here and would like to speak to this item. Now would be the time to do so.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's the staff recommended, I have over here my, the engineer that did the study, had a meeting with PG&E, he can explain to you better what happened today with the meeting, what they told him, what the job and what they want to be done over there.
Would you please identify yourselves?
My name's Russell Normath, Alpine Design Corp. here in Sacramento.
Thank you.
So we met with PG&E, and the extent of undergrounding, it's not that simple out there, unfortunately. The project would involve crossing Linden Boulevard because the poles fronting Jefferson Plaza hold transformers that serve the streetlights at Linden and Jefferson, as well as a service that crosses Linden and then crosses Jefferson and serves homes down to the south there. So the project we're looking at would have to cross Linden, and it would be on the order, rough estimates, PG&E would have to design the project first before you get a final cost, but it's over a hundred grand, and probably on the order of 150. And we're still, I think the net result would be, we'd still have two poles on Jefferson frontage, Jefferson Plaza frontage, so, which is what we have now.
I guess, in your conversation with PG&E, did, did you ask, or did they indicate if there was anything unusual about this project?
I think all overhead and underground projects are unique and have their own challenges. This one's very complicated in the sense that there's a lot of services crossing Jefferson Boulevard from that side. If, I'm not sure if you're aware, but you have overhead on either side of the Jefferson Boulevard through there as well. So the technical challenges are, I think, are above and beyond the normal over the underground conversion that one might expect, so.
I see, okay. Any, anything else you'd like to offer?
That's, that's about all I have to say about it.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant?
I do. The staff had just indicated, and I guess it's, it's, maybe staff can help answer, it was indicated that they were, they suggested or have a proposal to tie the undergrounding to final occupancy, or within two years, whichever comes first. Is that, were you aware of that? I'm not sure where we are in, because it's not in the staff report any conditions.
What we discussed last time at the meeting, we said that we can, the only way we can do that thing over here, we cannot make condition to the retail center right now because it's bad enough as it is trying to lease spaces right now with the economy, is to have this condition attached to the middle parcel, which I think is, I think is B, is it a B?
Lot C.
C, okay. Whenever we're going to develop that particular parcel, we have some plans to develop, and unless we really can split it, we're not gonna be able to develop at this time, at least for many years to come. Because right now, it's one parcel, and if we wanna get any construction loan for that building, another bank has to pay off the whole mortgage, and then give us another construction loan for this particular building, that would be impossible in this market right now. So we also discussed and said that we can commit up to a hundred thousand dollars for that transfer. Now, I could not get an accurate figure from PG&E or from the engineer to tell me what this is gonna cost. It can be from a hundred thousand to 200,000, maybe even more. PG&E could not even say what we'll need, and what they would need in the end, it might even change. They might require again to cross the street on the other side. So they could not really give us any specific amount of money, what this is gonna cost to do the undergrounding. We offered to do the undergrounding within our property, that's, that's fine, but if we have to cross the streets and go to the other side, and across the street to the east side of Jefferson, that will not gonna work. We cannot afford this kind of money right now with this kind of economic conditions. So we have a challenge over here. From one side, we want to develop this property, from the other side, we don't wanna have to face 300,000 dollars just to cross the lines and do the undergrounding. We can commit to a certain amount of money, and if it is within 10%, 15%, even 20% above the 100,000 dollars, we can probably work it, but if it comes back and say it's 250 or 300,000 dollars, that's not gonna work. We cannot do that. We have bad enough time right now as it is. This is our situation, that we want to split, we want to build the other building, but there's gonna be many years before really anything happen with these economic conditions over there. Only if we split it, we might be able to get a construction loan for that particular building, so be able to build it.
I'm a little unclear, do we know for sure whether or not you need to underground across Jefferson or not, or is that still up in the air?
They said that they, today, they said they have to cross at least on the other side of, with the tower, tower...
On Linden Road?
Right.
Okay.
At least that, but they also said, we cannot accommodate right now, we might have even to cross Jefferson. So, because they serving other areas from that particular pole. And I said, why we cannot just take the lines as it is and put them on the ground and raise them up to the, to the same pole and then remain as it is? They says, no, because of this, because of this transformer has to change. I mean, they trying to, once something happen, they're trying to do all things, also change everything at the same time.
They're actually...
Any more questions?
Their technical constraints, really, what PG&E was discussing as options were basically the, the technical constraints, so, based on those technical constraints, you know, we have to cross Linden, and possibly, if they can't carry the services, there's about eight homes on the east side that are served from that pole line, and the transformers on those poles. They couldn't guarantee that we can keep maintaining those overheads, so there's possibility that would have to be trashed across.
Typically, utility won't give you, it won't design until you pay the fees to, for the design, I understand that. Charlie, did you have a question?
Well, I guess I have a question, and maybe it's for David and you both, but I mean, I understood when you gave your report that they agreed they would do the undergrounding?
That was the, that was the outcome of our meeting, and...
Are you, are you still saying we're gonna do the undergrounding, or are you trying to put a condition on it differently?
The only, I don't have no problem to underground the lines within our property. That we can accommodate it. We, we, we figured out that's gonna, it was gonna cost less than 100,000, between 80 and 100,000 dollars. But now, when PG&E says that we still have to do the other stuff without giving us any...
Actually, PG&E said you may have to do the other stuff, according to what he said.
No, across the, across the tower, they said we have to. They don't know yet if we have to go across to this course, to this side.
I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, it's just like the applicant, we just approved an extension for, you know, down there where they're building the storage facility, part of theirs is you have to underground also, and I mean, I know that distinctly. I, I just have trouble figuring out how we're gonna do something, or what either one of you want us to do, you know, we need to say we're gonna do it.
I want at least...
We're not gonna put a dollar limit on it, because we can't control money, and we can't control the city purses here. That's fact. Is that right, Mr. Rickla? We don't control the money, and we can't.
That's correct.
Yeah. That's a dilemma for the Planning Commission, but we, we don't have that luxury. We're not the council, so we can't do anything like that. So we either have to approve your project, deny your project, something like that, I mean, you gotta, I don't know what you guys talked about for the last few weeks, but...
We did talk, and, and we agreed to do that, the undergrounding under, you know, within our property, that we agree, but we didn't know what PG&E eventually will come up with. That's what I said, 100,000 dollars, okay, we can probably do that, and, and participate in that thing. Now, looking farther up on the Jefferson, most of the lines are not underground, all the way up to the shopping center, the Southport Center, that along Jefferson still is over, you know, overhead. Under different circumstances, it would have been different. Right now, we have a hard time even maintaining what we have there, and we don't know what things will happen. We'd like to do this, we'd like to see if we can build the other project, but if it's, it's gonna come up to be an unbearable amount, I don't know if we're gonna do it. You know, we'd like to help and do something there, but don't throw all the weight on us, you know.
All right, any other questions of the applicant?
I have a comment, mostly it's a comment. Thank you guys for at least working out an agreement. I would support the agreement that you came up with, however, I have one concern about waiting till after construction versus prior to construction, and I'm not sure if that plays into the cost too much, especially if the building gets built, the map is approved, and then we come back with it's too costly, and then what do we do?
You know, that's where the subdivision improvement agreement and the bonding comes into play. It wouldn't be just as simple as a condition on, on paper, that would be the subdivision improvement agreement that would go along with the final parcel map, that would more formally memorialize the obligation to do the undergrounding by when, and then there's the bond that comes along with the subdivision improvement agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anybody else? We have no other slips to speak on this item. Seeing nobody standing up, I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action. Anybody have any questions, comments?
I just have a question. In the last meeting we had on this a month ago, there was some discussion that we had, and if we typically waive this requirement, we also asked the, the applicant to waive all rights to join any district or lighting district or whatever, so that should the rest of the area be developed, they cannot, they have to join it basically, so that they can pool costs and underground it, correct?
Yes, we discussed that.
I mean, I'm not, I'm just asking, typically, if you've done whatever was recalled, the, I think the applicant at that point also didn't like that idea either.
Well, I mean, historically, the commission has, you know, held fairly firm to this requirement on commercial projects...
Agreed.
And, and the large subdivisions, has typically been in more the rural parcel maps or the very small infill parcel maps where we have gone the route of the assessment district, you know, you know, that, that concept, but the commission has been consistent on this in other, other types of projects. And so we, we took that and from your last discussion and tried to work a compromise to give the developer as much time and flexibility to do the undergrounding, but to not let it, not let it go indefinitely either.
That was just my only question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any comments?
I have a comment, and, you know, I, I totally sympathize with what these fellows are going through. The problem I'm having is that the last commercial project we talked about was the storage facility, and that was one of the requirements, and they're gonna have to do it, and even though, he made the comment that you don't see a lot of undergrounding in that area, I totally agree, but if you let one of them go, I think you're, you're making a mistake, and you're setting your precedents that we really don't want. So I really believe that we should go with the staff recommendation here, and hopefully, when he gets all done with PG&E, it won't be so dramatic.
I guess one of the, I have several comments, too. First of all, on Attachment Three, we really have the guidelines for undergrounding on G, Underground Utilities Three, it says, "The Planning Commission may grant an exception to the undergrounding requirements," is provided in Section 16.44.404-G1, and it's titled, "If topography, soils, or other conditions make underground installation of the facilities unreasonable." And that's, that's related to physical conditions, it's not related necessarily to economic conditions, it's a matter of, is it feasible? And, and I would wanna disagree a little bit with the applicant regarding unusual or difficult undergrounding, the, all of the conductors, basically, that go across the street are secondary, they're low voltage, they're relatively inexpensive, and to relocate, but if you look at that out in the field, there's nothing irregular, the only irregular thing about that project really is, on the north end, where the property it joins Blacker Canal, and if the commission was considering, or staff was considering, undergrounding to the north, to across Blacker, that would be an unusual situation, because it would cause expensive boring underneath the ditch there, or fastening conduits to the, the bridge structure or something like that, that would really escalate the cost. But basically, this is a simple, average, routine-type undergrounding, and I can speak with authority on that, so I don't see anything associated with soils or underground conditions that would make it unreasonable, and I think, although Commissioner Sandeep's not here, I really paid attention to her comment at the workshop that we had regarding, I don't wanna drive down the road and look at one project and say, yeah, we developed this under good times, and this one, we developed this project under bad economic times, and that's why we didn't do this or do that. And I think this undergrounding is, is something that really is gonna take some, some work. The applicant, if he chooses to go forward with this project, if the underground's included, is gonna have to get an estimate, a firm estimate from PG&E, and the other utilities as to what it's gonna cost, just like building the building, you're, you're not gonna commit to building the building till you get it priced out and you get it all bid out, you're not gonna start your construction till you have all your costs associated with it, and this project may pencil out or it may not, we sure hope it does, but this issue came with the property when it was purchased, it was, there was actually a two lot split that was approved that had this condition, so this is not a new condition, this is just something that was with the old project, that project, I think, David, you, you called it, it was abandoned, or, or there's a technical term for the, the new buyer rejecting that old plan and starting over. That's what, that's what brought the, him the ability to construct without undergrounding, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So I don't see that the conditions have changed, and I have to say that I don't see that there were any technical burdens in getting, getting the undergrounding done. The other question I did have was, in the conditions, normally when you have a merger like this, or, excuse me, you have a parcel split, and common uses of the property, like parking, that there would be a reciprocal parking agreement, and I noticed even in Attachment Four, it doesn't address parking, is that something we need to put in this, David?
There's a note of, note to that effect on the face of the map, and including parking and utilities, refuse collection, et cetera, so those notes would be, would be approved.
That'll be part of, part of the action?
Yeah, and then that would be carried forth to the final map.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah.
I will make a motion that we approve staff's recommended action, which is to certify the project as categorically exempt from further environmental review pursuant to Class 15, Section 15 through 15 of the sequel guidelines, and deny the requested waiver for requirements to underground overhead utilities, and approve the requested tentative parcel map.
I have a motion, looking for a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to redo, yes, the appeal process is that any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission tonight by filing a written appeal to City Clerk and paying the appropriate fee within 10 days of the action tonight.
All right, thank you, Steve. Okay, item number four is a public hearing regarding the Fulcrum Properties tentative subdivision map number... subdivision map number four nine six one in the Bridge District, TSM zero eight dash zero four. And, Mr. Chilly, I guess, are you getting paid overtime for all this work we've done?
Sadly, no. One down, three to go. This, we are in a public hearing tonight regarding the Fulcrum tentative subdivision map in the Bridge District, formerly known as the Triangle. The commission may recall, last December, the commission took an action to recommend approval of the overall Fulcrum master plan to the city council on Fulcrum's holdings in the district. Ultimately, the city council did approve the Fulcrum master plan, which consisted of some amendments to the Triangle specific plan, as it was known at the time, really to establish Fulcrum's build-out program on the property and to generally establish its layout and block structure. That time, the council approved amendments to approximately one thousand seven hundred fifty housing units and about three point three million square feet of commercial development on Fulcrum Holdings in the Bridge District. Tonight, they have a subdivision map for you on the majority of Fulcrum's holdings, about forty-eight acres, where they propose to create sixty-four building lots and two lettered lots across their holdings. This is an implementation step for the overall build-out of the Fulcrum property, and so tonight, we are here seeking, recommending approval of the subdivision map as it's been presented to you. The commission will also recall that earlier this year, also produced a recommendation to the city council to approve numerous amendments to the Bridge District specific plan, those are still pending at city council, and hence, conditions haven't included on this map to require ultimate compliance with that. Staff should note, this is not a vesting map, however, so regardless if the map is, perhaps is approved tonight, it will still be subject to the ultimate Bridge District specific plan, including the design guidelines. We also provided a memo to your commission this evening regarding adding a new condition and revising a few of the conditions, these were some language changes to clarify those conditions as recommended to us by the city attorney's office, and we also are recommending some wording changes on our recommended action tonight regarding the environmental review. Commission should recall that there was an environmental impact report on this overall project that was certified by the council in February of this year. The building lots that Fulcrum proposes to create are sixty-four building lots of varying sizes, from townhome lots that would front the Channel Park, to much larger lots that we would expect to be developed with office buildings and potentially even further subdivided in the future. So, on the face of the map, there is a table of their proposed uses for each lot, and so we expect this, we would expect this map to ultimately likely be developed with several final maps over time as they build out their holdings. And as we say, this is an implementation measure for their overall master plan and long-term development of the Bridge District. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the subdivision map tonight, with the new condition related to affordable housing and the revised conditions as listed in the memo, and also minor revision to the recommended action, which is shown in the last bullet on the memo. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Dave? Maybe, go ahead, Russ.
Sorry, I know I have a couple that are just for David, so if I, I can just get those out of the way right now. David, under condition twenty-six, twenty-six has to do with storm drainage. Overland releases for the one-hundred-year storm shall be demonstrated, which finish floor elevations at least one foot above the one-hundred HDLs, can you tell me what that means?
I'd like to ask Mark Collier of our engineering division to go over that for us.
I meant to ask that earlier, but I stumbled over that sentence about three or four times.
HDLs refers to the hydraulic grade line of the flows that are generated from the hundred-year event, and in pipe or open channel flow, it's basically the water surface elevation, so we're looking to keep the finished floor elevations high and dry in the event of a hundred-year storm. Kind of a unique situation, typically in a typical subdivision where you have your streets and you have your residences with setbacks and that sort of thing, you know, we allow the roadways to carry the hundred-year event. Here, we have basically zero setback type of a scenario, so any flow in the streets is going to be a problem, so as we go through the design and figuring out what we're going to do with the drainage, majority of the hundred-year storm is going to be carried in the pipe system underground, so.
Okay, so it leaves the finished floor elevations one foot above the one-hundred.
Gives them a foot of freeboard.
Can you check the wording on that? It currently says which finished floor.
I think that probably should say with finished floor elevation.
Thanks.
Mark, don't leave yet.
Okay.
Anybody else have a question, since Mark is up here?
I have one more question regarding the memo you put up here today, the affordable housing, isn't that covered under the planned development? So, why would that be necessary in this?
Well, with the subdivision map, obviously, we expect, you know, a high degree of housing to be built in there, we feel it's appropriate to have that particular condition on there, as we do is more standard condition for subdivision maps. It's likely that all the affordable housing requirements will be addressed in the development agreement that's being currently negotiated between the city and Fulcrum, but at this point in time, we do recommend that it be put on there more as a, again, as a more standard condition that we apply on residential subdivision maps.
And the planned development and development agreement would supersede these conditions?
Well, they ultimately would be an affordable housing agreement that would go over the specifics of how all their affordable housing would be provided with their project, and so this section of municipal code does allow, it explains the basic affordable housing agreements, but does allow those to be also accommodated through a development agreement or similar instrument.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the reason I kind of interrupted you a little bit, Russ, is I had a question in that same category of conditions on the drainage, and I actually had a conversation with Mark and David earlier this week, because I didn't see anything that tied this project or the advancement of this project to storm drain detention, we had a detention basin in the original plan, and I guess it's still, there was a lot there that was set aside for storm collection, and if you look on the plans, you can see the storm drain, which way they're flowing and everything, but my question had to do with, are we going to be able to develop this project in the absence of a detention basin or some other predetermined process so that that stormwater would be collected and transported? Normally, every project we have has some sort of condition that would limit the development to the capacities that we have to transport water, and would you, for the commission, maybe address that?
We were intentionally vague as to the storm drainage solution, because we really don't know what it is yet, we've been working, spending a lot of time trying to come up with creative, sustainable methods of dealing with the storm drainage and actually avoiding the need for a detention facility. So, we addressed the development's obligation to comply with the ultimate solution in a previous condition of approval, which refers to compliance with the specific plan that's currently being updated.
So, we have the capability of working in, kind of in lockstep with development?
Yes, absolutely, they are intimately involved in finding a solution to this problem.
So, the developers are committed to the financial cost of getting that done, or is that, I was under the impression that part of that twenty-three million dollars we're getting that was going to be used for a lot of that structure, so we'll have to have a solution pretty quick then?
It will, it will be used toward that solution, it may be that there is some level of developer obligation to provide some sort of onsite mitigation, you know, the solution may be a combination of approaches to mitigating this. We have, we need to limit the flows post-development to pre-development levels, and pre-development, you basically have sixty cubic feet per second, post-development, you have three hundred and fifty, so we need to knock the peak off fairly significantly, and we're looking for a combination of ways to do that most economically.
But it sounds like, from our conversation earlier this week, that if all else fails, the detention basin will do the job.
Detention basin will work.
And it's just trying to figure out a way to not use up that kind of land for that kind of purpose.
If possible.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mark.
Sure.
Any questions, any more comments about the project? We've seen it quite a few times. So, I would be looking for a motion then.
I think you have to have a public hearing first.
Oh, that's right. Does anybody want to talk about this? We have no slips, but I will open the public hearing, and if somebody wants to speak to this that hasn't filled out a slip, then we'll welcome you to speak also. See, and then I'll close the public hearing, and turn it back to the commission.
I do have one comment I was saving for after that. I just wanted to make the one comment that, just to be clear about it, that we're approving a tentative subdivision map, which allows the developer to build or sell the property, however, we're doing this before the specific plan is complete, the design guidelines are not complete, and I don't expect to see building occurring before those are done, but I just wanted us to be aware that we're doing this, and to make sure that we keep, say, keep the eye on the ball, that we need to get through those other aspects as well.
Maybe it'd be appropriate for staff to kind of address the timing and the status of that, David?
Yes, the specific plan amendments were previously approved by your commission and at the city council, we expect to take those forth in October for final approval. The architectural guidelines are being prepared, we would anticipate bringing those to your commission, can't say exactly when at this point in time, but I would certainly hope it would be before the end of the year, but I can't guarantee that at this point in time. And also, I think it's important to remember that there's still the final map phase of this, after tentative is approved tonight, you know, the parcels that you're showing on this tentative map, even if the map's approved tonight, they still don't become legal lots of record until the final map is recorded, and that's still some, likely some time away, especially since, you know, the map, tentative maps are approved for a three-year timeframe with extensions possible. So, we are very sensitive to the nature that the specific plan and design guidelines are not complete at this point in time, although we do believe they are substantially complete, but to be extra careful, we have included conditions on this map that do require compliance with those final documents, and with that, we are recommending approval of the map this evening.
Thank you, David. So, the city is not at risk by getting the cart a little bit before the horse?
Well, especially since this is not a vesting map.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we have had the public hearing now, any more discussion? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we affirm the action, and item number four is opposed by staff.
I'll second.
That would include the memo from David Tilly in your motion?
With the memo, excuse me, David, with the memo.
Okay, including the?
Including the memo.
The August nineteenth memo, okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, congratulations, good luck on the project. Okay, we have a little change in item number five, we're not going to take action on this item tonight, we are going to open up a public hearing and receive comment, though, and this is about the proposed green building ordinance, and Steve, will you kind of give us a report on that?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the planning commission, I'm glad, Mr. Morizini, that you mentioned that we will not be taking action on it tonight, because there are at least two or three individuals that I see out in the audience that are here tonight specifically for this item, so that I might clarify. I originally had a PowerPoint, but since all six members of the planning commission were here during the last discussion of this item, where we went over the basic operating mechanics of the ordinance, and those operating mechanics really have not changed significantly since our last meeting, I'd really want to focus on what's occurred over the last three months or so. First of all, I'd like to point out that this ordinance has been discussed extensively. We've now been involved in preparation of the green building ordinance for a little bit over six months, that has involved a team of individuals, nearly all of which are here tonight, that have, it's involved presentations to our Housing Advisory Commission, our Economic Development Advisory Commission, to build it green, we've had many very productive meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, Sacramento Builders Exchange, we had a green building seminar on this, we had over a hundred individuals attend, and then since the last time that we met with you, we had a series of stakeholders' meetings with individuals interested in sort of a group that would be working and actually implementing individuals that are builders and other individuals, so it's been discussed very much. As part of attachment number two in your staff report, you see that staff has prepared lists summarizing ninety different comments that we've received, all of which have a response, and again, it shows you sort of the detail. So, what are the major issue areas that are remaining? I'd like to go over them fairly quickly, and I think the staff report identifies about four or five issues. First of all, there is still concern about how the green building ordinance would lengthen the city's existing building approval process, and staff received this comment from several courses, including the Chamber of Commerce, it came up at the green building seminar also in June, the green building ordinance presumes to follow the established building process and attempts to streamline all additional activities within the current review procedures. While there certainly will be some issues associated with the green building ordinance that will come up with implementation, initial implementation of it, we do not anticipate any significant delays in processing permits. There's also been a lot of talk and concern about the additional cost of constructing green buildings, many comments were voiced with this concern, and based on research conducted by the city, the additional costs to building green vary from building to building, but generally, the costs are similar, approximately five percent more than a traditional building in the cost of single-family homes, based on a study that was done by the city of Santa Rosa, basically, the additional cost for residential, they found to be around fifty-four percent. However, this relative minor level will allow a homeowner to recapture points in utility and cost savings in water usage, as well as utility savings. There was some discussion about reviewing the process for building plan to subdivisions, building plan subdivisions within the green building ordinance, essentially, the comment was received from the chamber and a few local builders regarding, will there be a duplicative review, and we've indicated that people would be required, or builders would be required to produce worst-case scenarios as currently required for Title twenty-four, if that scenario passes the green building ordinance requirements, then the house design does not need to be reviewed again for the purposes of complying with the green building ordinance. An issue that we talked about in some detail at the June eighteenth meeting was the issue regarding why you build it green and lead, and why not use the state building green standards? And after further discussion with other jurisdictions using lead and a conversation with the vice chair of the state green building standards, staff concludes that the state building standards are too prescriptive and do not allow for enough flexibility on the contractor and architecture's part. Once the state green building ordinance is accepted for all building types, city staff, again, will have the opportunity to review the green building ordinance to ensure compliance with state standards, and a more in-depth discussion of, this is included in your staff report under lead and build it green versus the... under LEED and Build It Green versus the state 2008 green building standards code. So those are the principal issues that have come up. The thing I'd like to talk about now for just a few minutes is what's changed significantly since June? And in responding to the concerns about the timing of the implementing green building ordinance and the costs associated in it, and this particularly came out with our very productive discussions with the Chamber of Commerce at the stakeholders' meeting, staff is proposing conducting a voluntary pilot phase for the green building ordinance. And under this concept, projects would be able to voluntarily commit to complying with the green building ordinance. The pilot program would provide construction cost information and test the workings of the green building ordinance. Pilot length could either be based on a certain number of projects that come in, or it could be based on a certain time. Staff would build incentives during that period with the pilot to encourage participation in the program, such as limiting the building permit fee to the pre-compliance construction value. In addition, staff spent a lot of time, as I alluded to just very, very quickly, about types of cost. We tried to analyze the actual decrease in operating costs, increases in building value, return in investment, and effect on rent by going to a green building ordinance, which is summarized in your staff report. We also looked at how LEED certification affected project costs. And as the staff report indicated, that generally they do increase project costs by about 1% to 4%. We also looked at the exchanges in soft costs resulting from implementation of the ordinance. In addition, one of the changes that we made to the ordinance is based on comments from the North State Building Industry Association. We reduced the required point level under Build It Green for residential from 65 to 50. So tonight, Mr. Chairman, what I'm asking is for you to take public comment and particularly to get your thoughts on the concept of the pilot program that came about with our discussions with the Chamber of Commerce. And then to, tonight, continue the item to at least the September 17 meeting to give our staff and our city attorney additional time to review the ordinance to make sure it is one that is legal as well as meeting the needs of the citizens of this community. Also tonight with me is Denise Cocko, who's the project manager for the green team, and Randy Goodwin, our city architect, and Charlene Hamilton, our development services manager. And we've all been involved in the project in different phases over the last six months. So you got the brain trust here tonight, so.
Great, thank you, Steve, for your presentation. Any comments before I open the public hearing on this? I do have three slips, people that would like to speak. So I will open up the public hearing now and ask Dan Ramos if he would come and tell us what he has on his mind. We haven't seen you in a couple of weeks, Dan.
Yeah, I was a loser last week, anyway. Thanks, Ron. Good evening, members of the planning commission. I'm Dan Ramos. I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce Public Affairs Committee. So I want to make sure it's clear, I'm not representing the board. We're still weighing in on this, but we thought it'd be appropriate, this workshop format, to come and share our experience with the planning commission of where the dialogue's been going and kind of where we're at on this thing. First of all, on the green building ordinance, we wanted to let everybody know here in the city of West Sacramento, the chamber very much supports the idea of the green concept and marketing our city and being a leader in that. Understand it, think it's great, great way to market the whole work. So we're on board, so we want to get something done. We do have some concerns, though, and I want to, that's why we want to let you guys know. This is where we're at, and I think, but also in doing that, I wanted to take special mention in terms of, we really appreciate, this is not something that's been rushed through. Denise and the whole crew have been to see us, Steve, and in terms of getting our input, and we appreciate that. They've gone out of their way to reach out, have come over to our public affairs meetings, have special meetings, and actually it's been too independent. So we really appreciate that outreach and then taking into account our concerns. So that's been great. Our biggest thing in this thing is that, right now, we're in a difficult market. And all you're going to hear is, well, we've got to adjust to this market, but things are tough out there right now in terms of this marketplace of getting new development occurring. Just our fees are very high here, and we're working really closely with staff. It's another great outreach that's going on in terms of how we can look at our fees in this community to get ourselves, we can build again. Right now, it's very difficult to build. It just, those things don't pencil out. So we're concerned about costs, even, you know, we're talking about here about building greens 3% or 4%. That's enough to not put a project on the books. So I just, we're very concerned about the cost of this and the implementation of it. Remember, I think what's real important for this community to realize is that flood improvements are probably our top priority in this community. We've based our flood improvement program here in the city on terms of, we have a local assessment and we have a fee program that goes with it. We need development to occur to be able to make our flood improvements. Classic thing. It's very important that we do it, if not take our eye off the ball here. If we burden development too much, even in such a great thing as this green stuff here, we can not get development, we won't get flood protection. So we want to work collaboratively with the city to get this done, but we can't overburn. We've got to watch this. So really appreciate what Steve mentioned tonight about the voluntary pilot program to get this thing started. I think the good news about this thing, I think you heard from the BIA, the housing side of it, can probably do this, with the adjustments made to the 50 points. I think they're on board with that. A lot of that stuff's already kind of being mandated through Title 24, so they're pretty much on board. So they probably can get the residential side of it going, but be careful on the commercial side. We need to work more. And I suggest that, you know, it's all kind of a matter of attitude right now in terms of how we do this. Instead of doing a mandated program, and I'm, no, I'm done. Maybe somebody can ask me a question, I can finish up. I don't know if that's okay, Ron. Somebody asked me a question, so I can finish, I'd really like to, so.
We know you can wrap it up quickly.
Yeah, it's that in this regulatory environment, mandated, let's get to an incentive-based program. And there's a really good one, and it's the city of Seattle. And I brought something here to give to Denise here tonight. We reviewed this, it's an excellent program. How they started this, and they're the number one city in the U.S. in terms of this green program. Thought outside the box, based it on incentive, not mandates. They've been very, very successful with their program here in terms of how they've done it. They've collaborated with their local energy companies and stuff. They really did the savings that need to be done. So I just think we've got to get smart. Let's not rush in and create a mandate here. I like the volunteer idea, the pilot program. And I think together, we can be that leader in this community. No doubt about it, we can be the leader in doing this. But we've got to be very, very careful, very careful, because if we do something that mandates, we don't get development occurring here, we won't see anything green right now. So that's pretty much it. So we've got a lot more to say, but...
Thank you, Dan.
We'll do it another time.
Any questions, Dan?
Just one, though. I mean, how are the, what are the incentives? I mean, is it reduced fees?
Yes, reduced fees. There's a whole, it's kind of quite well organized, like what Seattle does here in terms of rebasing because of water uses. A lot of stuff done with their energy, obviously, the energy side. And that would involve PG&E, I think Seattle has its own energy. So there's, you know, it's got to be hybrided to what we do here. But it's just, it's just getting out of that regulatory mindset, you've got to do it. But no, here, we want you to do it, you know, working collaboratively, that's the kind of thing.
I mean, I was wondering if you could work with PG&E and RNE to make some of this work.
There's more to do, and so we can get there, but we've just got to be careful, you know. And this, real quick instance here. Mark, you guys were mentioning earlier on the map for the Bridge District, for the Falcon Properties or stuff. We're working on a concept up there on the drainage that's unbelievable, that we're, hopefully, if everything goes right, I know we've had experts out from Iowa to look at this, but we might be able to do our entire drainage up there without putting a pipe in the ground, without doing a tension basin. It's all through porous concrete and then the water drain, right under that big old sandbar up there.
Okay, I'm going to have to cut you off now. We're talking about a different subject.
Well, I know, but that's green. And that's something we do cooperatively. Those things like that we need to explore. So I just wanted to let you know, there's some neat stuff out there, so.
Any other questions about this subject?
Yeah, Dan, I just wanted to ask. I noticed comments by staff in here when they're talking about construction costs. And it says that research has shown that costs are similar or up to about 5% or more. I mean, is that something that you would agree or disagree with, or do you have any?
I would disagree. Every project is different. I mean, it's got a pencil, and we're at a tipping point now, so. And what we're finding, the market's not paying for it, just not. You know, if we talk about it, the state of California is the best example of it. They talk green, want to be green. When they go out leasing around the community, they won't do it, and it's very frustrating. So I hope we can lead by example. I think our city already has a policy of building green. I think we're already there with that, I hope we are, that we do, so.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next, Matt Hedges.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Matt Hedges, I represent the Sacramento Builders Exchange. The Sacramento Builders Exchange is very much in support of a green building ordinance. Everybody, I think, can agree that West Sacramento going green is a good thing for all parties, but it just has to be done right. That being said, this particular green ordinance, we believe, will have serious unintended harmful effects on West Sacramento construction, on these commercial and mixed-use projects. The problem with this ordinance is the idea that green buildings should be mandating, as Dan was saying, as opposed to incentive-based. Mandating that buildings should be done green will add a significant amount of costs to construction projects at the worst time imaginable. West Sacramento has an amazing amount of building potential. Creating higher costs is only going to restrain this potential. When reviewing this green building ordinance, the green building ordinance in five different cities were reviewed to see which ordinance worked the best. And all of them were mandated as opposed to incentive-based. Incentives work, and they should be reviewed as an alternative when drafting this plan. You know, I want to echo a little bit of what he said about Seattle. It's consistently ranked the very top for green building projects, and it's because they're incentive-based. Builders are encouraged to build there as opposed to going elsewhere. Now, more than ever, we need to create jobs instead of stifling them. And West Sacramento, you know, has always had the problem of a lot of building going on at the other side of the river. This is going to encourage that. By an average of 5%, these building costs are going to go up. This is the opposite time to be doing this kind of thing. Builders are not going to want to build here. As written, the Sacramento Regional Builders Exchange is going to be very opposed to this issue. But if it were to go to something incentive-based, that would be something that we'd be very encouraged by and be very supportive of.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions, Matt?
Thanks.
Thank you. And last, another Matt, Matthew Hargrove. Good to see you, Matthew.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Matthew Hargrove, I'm a West Sacramento resident. In my real life, in my professional life, I'm with the California Business Properties Association and represent a commercial professional group for commercial property owners. And as you can see through the matrix, I've spent a lot of time working on this green building code. And I do want to acknowledge that it's come a long way since the original draft that we saw in the Housing Commission, which I chair several months ago. Also was here for the Economic Committee, which heard this and which every single commissioner expressed concern about moving forward at this time with a green building code. And I do have those issues. But what I want to talk about is the way the code is based. It's based on a private program, two private programs, LEED and BIG. What I would ask the commission to do is wait until the state finishes its work on the California Green Building Code. It should be adopting a mandatory commercial code. It adopted a mandatory residential code last year. We'll be adopting a mandatory commercial code this year. Within that code, we hope to see several different tiers. And that way, you'll see in the staff report here that the city staff won't have to do a LEED checklist above and beyond what they already have to enforce under Title 24 and California building codes. I also want to make sure that you know that we're not talking about going from not green to green if you adopt this. California already has the greenest building code in the nation. A building built here in West Sacramento right now at the baseline level, the minimal building code level, is approximately 50% more energy-efficient than the national average. And it's about half as much greenhouse gases as the rest of the nation. So with this code, we're not talking about going from non-green buildings to really green buildings. Also, within the staff comment here, it says that just the minimum building code is already at LEED silver. So if we're already building at LEED silver under the minimum state building codes, why would you adopt something, a whole new checklist to do that gets you to LEED silver? It doesn't make a lot of sense. And I'd also like to comment in the staff note here that says, every city that they've talked to is very happy that they're using LEED. Well, it's kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy. There's about 470 local jurisdictions in California. Do you know how many have adopted a LEED-based local green building ordinance program? About 27. So about 5% of the local jurisdictions have adopted a LEED program. So if you're going to talk to people who are in an extreme minority of people who have adopted a program, you would expect them to say that they like the program. And then also, to Commissioner Galvane's question about these studies that show, and it's just a little bit of, a little bit extra, I think it was 54 cents for home. I mean, does that pass the straight face test? Again, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy. Those projects that have gone green have gone green because they penciled out from the start. There's not a government entity saying that you have to build green. LEED, if you go to their website, says that that's a program based on elite buildings. The top 10, 15, 20% of buildings are supposed to be built at LEED. Well, our baseline buildings are already at their LEED silver. So according to their regulations, we're already building elite buildings here in West Sacramento. So I would say adopting something that goes above and beyond what we're already doing is unnecessary, and it's just going to create a little issue with cost and with unnecessary regulation. And just one last thing before I go, on the commercial side, this would apply to shopping centers built in West Sacramento. And do you know how many LEED silver-certified shopping centers have been built west of the Rockies? It's in California, it's one of my members, one. So this isn't a hugely, easily obtainable goal, getting a LEED silver certified for the commercial side of things. There's a lot of very difficult things involved here, especially when you're using the LEED site certified criteria. A lot of that has to do with public transportation and riding bikes. And a lot of folks are going to be riding buses or bikes to our industrial buildings in West Sacramento. So thank you very much, I really appreciate your time. Again, I would just ask that you, that city hold off, don't adopt these private programs, and adopt something that's based on the California Green Building Code for the first state in the nation to adopt it, I'm very proud of that. And West Sacramento could be the first city in the state of California to adopt something based on that really good program. Thank you.
Before you leave, are there any questions? I'm presuming that these points that you brought out were discussed in the workshops and that sort of.
Yeah, I've been at basically all the workshops that we've talked about. I gave written testimony to the Economic Commission. Some of my comments are here in the matrix, and most of you know my home phone number and would be happy to talk with you at any point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, those are all the slips that we received, just from the three. Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission? We do have time. I'll see you, and then I'm going to close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the commission for discussion before we continue this item. Comments?
I'll go first, Mr. Chair, if you know.
Sure.
Thank you. Thanks, staff, for bringing this out and really for recommending, which I think is the right action, giving us an opportunity to hear a little more comment, allowing yourselves to go back and talk some more to the team you have working on this, because it's obvious that there are a lot of parties concerned about this. A lot of parties that are supportive of the initiative in general, as am I. But there are some questions before we push through an initiative like this that do need to be answered. A couple of things that I would like to see maybe in the next moment this comes back. You outline, the point has been made, and we've talked about this previously, about the state green building standards. And just getting a better sense of, I probably need to do a little more research into it myself in terms of comparing those between having these other programs and their prescriptive nature, as we put it, and would we be better off having a state program? Just something that maybe outlines that a little better for me to be able to understand that. Another point on the implementation, if we go forward with a voluntary pilot phase, which, this is really my bigger concern with this. There are obvious points of opposition or obvious points of concern about the program, about lengthening the city approval process and then cost to the buildings. And I think there's other ones, but really, to me, those are two general areas that we're talking about. Generally speaking, I'm a believer that if you're going to add in new process or new cost, whatever the case, generally you want to be neutral in terms of its overall effect. cost, whatever the case, generally you want to be neutral in terms of its overall effect, so it's taken from somewhere else. So thus, the concept of incentives to offset any new costs that are born, whatever. But what I don't see in here is, it's been assured that no additional time is anticipated for review of plans. I just don't see, in a pilot program, if we go forward with it, how we measure that? How are we, no, I mean, are we taking baseline benchmarking of projects today, seeing what they have versus what it will be? I understand it's probably a checklist, but we're not measuring this time of application. Those are the kind of things that I'm interested in, because how do we know at the end of the day that the pilot met that, met that threshold? That unintentionally, maybe something else came out of this, that the applicants need to go back and research LEED programs on different types of buildings. Again, I'm just, I don't have a feel for how we're going to measure success out of a pilot. And I have a background with pilot programs from my own line of work, and sometimes they turn into permanent things without much input on how, whether they're measured, or whether it's success. And that's what worries me about that. So I'm looking at the cost that accrues to the, not only the building itself, but the cost by way of going, doing business with the city. And I think that's just one key that, if we're going to go forward with a pilot, that's great, but I just don't see any program in here and how we're going to measure its success at the end of the day. Because if it's not, then we've got to be real with that and be able to turn back. So that would be one thing I would like to see added to sort of the pilot phase. I have some feedback. I think that's just a big part of kind of how we know whether it's working. We all know that we're going to get, the end result is having a community that's more green, that is more sustainable. All those are important things, and we know that. But again, I think we have this issue of creating an environment where, even if it's a perception that it's more expensive or more timely to do business here, which equals more expensive, that that can be an impediment to economic development. So I think we just have to be cognizant of that, and the only way you can knock that down is with facts and with measures. So that's why I'm after. If at the end of the day, there's no, if the measure says there's no added time, there's no added cost, you know, and the program's working, and we don't sacrifice other areas for it, then, you know, that will tell us something different. So anyway, that's just my feedback on the implementation part. And that's really all my comment at this point.
Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank the speakers tonight. That was very informative. Thank you very much, and I too am in support of some degree. I'm just curious, and I echo Commissioner Desma's comments about measuring it, and would there be a timeframe within which we would measure that? Have you thought of a six-month pilot program, a year-long pilot program? And it would be a voluntary pilot program, as I understand it, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Have we, have there been other cities that we've looked at that have had that type of voluntary program, and what type of participation they've had?
That had voluntary, excuse me.
That had voluntary and went to mandatory?
I'm sorry.
That had voluntary and went to mandatory?
Yes, that went to mandatory.
I'm aware of just one other jurisdiction that had an approach. It was a city in Sonoma County.
And I'm just curious, what, did they have a large group participate in the voluntary program?
I'm not familiar with all the details.
And I missed it earlier. The name of the program in Seattle, I apologize. I should have asked Dan earlier.
Okay. I had a couple of comments. Probably when we see this again, we need a little bit of clarification. The speakers talked about cost. That's important. And it's obvious that the building community right now is really sensitive to any additional costs. And in the staff report, there's a kind of a 5% number that you used, Steve, earlier, and that's actually on page two of the staff report. But then when you get a little deeper on page six of the staff report, it starts talking about what kind of costs are associated with being LEED certified, and then LEED silver certified, and gold, and then there's some soft costs added. And so I kind of gleaned through all that stuff, and what I came up with is on LEED certified for a project, it would be 2.5% to 7.1% more than without meeting those standards. Silver would be 5.5% to 9.1% higher when you add the soft costs. And then gold would be 7.5% to 14.1%. So depending on which level you want to get to, they can be considerably more than 5%. And that information's here, but it's really not focused on. And I think that that is worth looking at, because we really need to establish what our priorities are. We need, like Mr. Ramos indicated, the flood issue. You know, we need development to build our levees. We need that revenue to build our levees. And so we need to encourage development. And so where does this fit in, in 2009, in these economic times and the foreseeable future? How critical is it for us to meet these kind of green standards versus the impact that it may have on getting a recurrence of development, especially, well, residential and development. We're dependent upon both. And so I think that we want to make sure that, first of all, the pilot project is going to be good. But if we can't measure it, if it's a voluntary program, there probably isn't a speaker that came before us that would develop to those standards if they didn't have to. So what will we do? Will we have to require these developers to go through the motions and to identify what they would do, and determine what those costs would be, or how, if it's just a pilot program, and I think it shouldn't be mandatory to start with. I think that's a good concession that we're making. But we need to have good data that we can evaluate to just see what the cost would be, and what kind of impact that would have on development. So.
There is one issue that I'd like to address, and you raised it in the first part of your comment, Mr. Morzini, and that was the issue regarding costs. And obviously, the staff report talks about certain analytical studies and studies that have been done statewide and even nationally. As part of the stakeholders group, we convened a group of approximately a dozen individuals, members of the chamber, a group of architects, and a group of builders. So they are individuals that had experience in the Sacramento area. And one of the things that was very surprising to us to find, and these are individuals that have built a lot of buildings, both recently and over the last couple of years, and we found in that cases that there were a number of individuals, and by I say a number, two or three of the assembled group, who really indicated that the cost now in producing a certified or a silver-rated building, and see, are actually less significantly, less than 5%. And so what I wanted to point out is there's just a lot of information out there. Mr. Ramos suggested some information, but there were also individuals there who indicated that the cost differences now have actually been shrinking substantially in the last couple of years and are approaching near nothing. So I did want to identify that, but in response to the gentleman with the Sacramento Builders Exchange, I think the city is very interested in incentives. I know I haven't looked at the Seattle ordinance. I'm not certain whether or not anyone else and a member of the green team have, but that's certainly something that we would be happy to look in and investigate. And I think that bears some future analysis over the next month. But on the cost issue, it's very subjective, and it's very interesting when you get a group of Sacramento builders in a room, because the differences in what they're seeing are pretty substantial. And I just wanted to make those comments.
All right. Now, when we see this again on the 17th, will this pilot program be refined to the point where we can have an understanding?
We will work on it.
With the duration, and is it going to be, are we kind of going to study this? That's what a pilot would really do, is allow you time to implement a program voluntarily and study the results, and then make adjustments. So I'm presuming, then, that what we see would be a pilot project rather than an ordinance. Is that what?
No, we would see an ordinance, and the pilot program may or may not be built in to the ordinance. I think that's a point of discussion. But as you can see from the staff report, the concept of the pilot program is something very recent. You saw basically a skeleton laid out of a concept.
So what you're saying, I'm understanding, is that the staff wants to do this anyway, but we'll do it voluntarily at first and then implement it as a mandate.
We'll come back to you with a voluntary pilot program along with the ordinance in more detail the next time we get together, be it September 17th. For if it takes longer to get it right, then we'll come back at a slightly later time.
So basically, then, it's an ordinance that's going to have a voluntary component, and then a drop-dead date for that, and then it'll be permanent?
The actual mechanics and how it reads is something that I think we need to discuss.
That's going to have to be worked out, because I think, I think there's some dialogue going on now that needs to be kind of furthered. Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and continue this item to September 17th, 2009. Thank you, Steve, and thank you, speakers, everybody interested in this item. The next one, and our last agenda item, is item 6 of Public Hearing and Adoption of Resolution 09-04 PC, recommending that the City Council adopt proposed changes to the sign ordinance, Chapter 17.33 of the Municipal Code. And Sandra White was to make this presentation, and I understand she's not here tonight, and probably Mr. Tilly will do this. Is that a safe bet?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Morzini. I'll be giving you the presentation on this item tonight in Sandra's place. Tonight, we are seeking your action on a planning commission resolution regarding amendments to the city's sign ordinance, which is contained in Chapter 17.33 of the Municipal Code. It's where we commonly refer to the sign ordinance, but it is part of our overall municipal code within the zoning chapter. Our principal, the principal goal and objective for looking at the signed ordinance at this point in time relates to trying to achieve content neutrality. And what that means is that we don't want to be directly or indirectly having any sign regulations that are content-based because of First Amendment protections. However, time, place, and manner restrictions in terms of signage are still permissible. So it's our intent to actually repeal and then reenact the entire signed ordinance chapter with that as a primary goal. But since the signed ordinance itself is on the table, there are some changes, mechanical changes we desire to make as well. This was presented to your Commission in a workshop format at your last meeting, and we know there were a few questions that were that, and those have been addressed in the staff report. I also wanted to make note that the Commission should have received a revised version of the ordinance earlier this week. We made some additional changes in some of the language and wording for clarification purposes, and we also added a couple of definitions, particularly in terms of mobile billboard has been added to, under the portable sign definition. However, we're still intending to regulate that in the same manner. And we've also tried to clarify how signage is handled in residential zones. This is something that has come up most recently with respect to the in-home family daycare businesses, which are technically not home occupations. So they kind of fall into a category of, well, it's not a home occupation, but it is kind of a quasi-commercial business, but is still in a residential area in a single-family home. So we kind of find that current ordinance is generally silent on that topic of signage in residential areas for businesses, if you will. So we have, we've come up with some standards that address that situation to provide them some degree of signage, but to still keep that signage limited, since we are talking about a single-family residential zone. As I mentioned, during the workshop, there were some questions. Sandra's addressed them in the report. I'd like to summarize that for you this evening. There were questions regarding freestanding signs along West Capitol Avenue. Freestanding signs are allowed currently on West Capitol Avenue and continue to be allowed under this revised ordinance. The design guidelines that were adopted by the Council in 2007 did try to change the focus of West Capitol Avenue, try to bring buildings to the street. Many areas have a five-foot build-to line along West Capitol. We certainly would anticipate that new buildings, you know, may not even need freestanding signs anymore, because the building itself would be the sign. That was part of the objective of how we did the design guidelines. But certainly, under current regulations and as proposed, freestanding signs certainly will still be allowed on West Capitol and elsewhere. We aren't proposing any changes in terms of where they're allowed, or the size or dimensions of those signs. And there's also discussion regarding the freeway information signs. These are the large multi-tenant signs that we see go up in some of the freeway interchanges. There is the one out at Enterprise and Lake Road that was developed, and I recall the developer very sheepishly coming back to the Commission and seeking a height variance to go to 75 feet after he had already built it. I don't recall that he ever actually did extend the height of that sign, but that was the only one where we had that issue. The most recent one, of course, was the one built at Harbor Boulevard near the Ramada Inn. So staff tonight is seeking action on this to approve a planning commission resolution, ultimately move this to City Council. We'll likely have some further sign ordinance changes for you in the next several months. At this point in time, we wanted to bring forth what we consider to be the most critical ones, and also achieve the content neutrality objective. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, David. Any questions of David at this point?
I actually only have a comment if I could. And, you know, the freeway sign, I happen to totally agree with you. I think that one's perfect. But, you know, we've been talking about the signage on West Capitol Avenue. When I've talked, or I've heard other comments, I happen to be thinking in a different direction. And I just want to spend a second, and I don't know that it's real important here, but I think it's going to become important someday in the future. And that is, if your signage says you've got to be back five feet, but we're building right up to the sidewalk, there is no place for signage on a building. And I was kind of thinking, when I'd heard it talked about before, I was wondering what we were going to do to that building when you have a little strip of buildings, maybe three or four, five, and, you know, couldn't they have a sign sticking out off the building? And I don't know where we're going to go with this, but I think in particular, West Capitol Avenue is going to have to be looked at at some future date. It may not need to be in here, David, but I think you're still going to have to look at it, because pretty soon, we're going to have the bigger sidewalks, we're going to have people there. And I'm trying to think of how you're going to put signage on a building, and people are going to know where it's at.
As a matter of fact, we actually did address that in the West Capitol Design Guidelines to allow blade signs that project from the face of buildings, because we did anticipate that as new buildings come and they're built closer to the street, you know, the standard freestanding signs that we're used to out there probably won't be the case. And that was something that our current ordinance actually prohibits, was projecting signs.
That's correct.
But through the design guidelines for West Capitol that the Council adopted, we did try to accommodate the blade sign concept along the lines of exactly what you're saying.
Is that what it's called, a blade sign?
Yeah.
That sticks out? But see, I don't see that in this part of the ordinance.
Yeah, the blade sign provision is actually contained within the West Capitol Design Guidelines. We haven't thus far at least proposed to take the blade sign concept, you know, citywide.
I don't think it'll apply anywhere but on West Capitol.
Well, yeah, we agree, and that's principally why we wanted to have it.
But I think that was a comment on this particular thing. I think we were trying to talk about what happens, well, the first building we're going to see that's up against the sidewalk is that project down by Sycamore, because they're supposed to have some commercial thing there. And I just don't know how you're going to know it's there. I mean, you said you could paint the building or whatever, but I don't think that's going to work in that case. So that's, I think that was the discussion that was trying to go on here.
Yeah, and the blade sign concept, you know, where it actually would, you know, project, you know, perpendicularly to the street, you know, from a second, you know, from like a... a second, you know, non, you know, first-story level was, we anticipated that, you know, the freestanding sign we're used to would be problematic when the buildings are out there, especially with much wider sidewalks. So that's where the blade sign concept was specifically accommodated for West Capitol Avenue.
Any other questions? Since you were talking about that, this is Sandra's project, so I don't expect you to be 100% up to date on it. But actually, what you're describing is a projection sign. And basically, it says that projection signs can't be installed unless they're in a PUD.
Well, that is how the ordinance is currently written. And there is, however, the provision in the new ordinance that we have expanded to, this is in section 1733-030D, for planned development overlays and adopted design guidelines. And basically, what, this is an existing provision, but we have expanded it somewhat in this new ordinance, which essentially provides that in planned development areas or otherwise where you have formal design guidelines, that you can provide signage criteria that are specific to that area that may not necessarily, you know, meet the basic science standards.
Okay, because in this draft ordinance, section 17.33.090C says projecting signs, except, which are, they're prohibited, except as permitted by planned development overlays and/or adopted design guidelines.
Yeah, and that's kind of getting to what we were talking about just now with Commissioner Moore, whereas the projecting signs, we don't necessarily feel is appropriate to have, you know, citywide. But in a case where we have design guidelines where they're part of an integral package, and West Capitol Avenue is the prime, would be the prime example in this case.
So there could, probably could also be variances granted if, I guess I'm a little hung up on that five-foot thing where if the conditions warranted a sign, because I would say right now on West Capitol Avenue, there are more than a few signs that don't meet the criteria, even if, even after theoretically complying with our sign ordinance, that their relationship in respect to the property line, the right-of-way would probably not meet the code. But as long as, you're indicating some flexibility here, especially in those areas, because I'm thinking like Togo's, you know, they have a pedestal sign there, but if that was constructed tomorrow, it would be up against the sidewalk, and they wouldn't be able to have that pedestal sign because you wouldn't be able to see.
Well, with the West Capitol sign guidelines, they would be able to have a sign, I think, that projects as much as five feet, you know, from the building face, you know, perpendicular to the street.
Good. And I see that's a change from the last revision that we saw. That's good.
But just as a final comment on it, will this, do we do the same thing then in the triangle, the bridges project? How's that going to work over there? Or have we looked at that yet?
We haven't looked at signage that specifically yet right now.
I mean, it might be another area that we're talking about in the future that we're going to have to look at because that's going to be right up against the sidewalk, too.
Yeah, absolutely. And we will need to do that with much wider sidewalks and likely in some of the architectural guidelines, we're really going to want to look at signage on buildings, you know, so they can make sure it's integrated with the building design.
Any other questions or comments? Chris, go ahead.
Thanks, David. On the freeway signs, additional, well, freeway signs, number four. The sign shall identify the city, the off-ramp, and at least five businesses or centers directly serviced by that ramp. Are we, is the intent that the sign must be full or have at least five businesses on it at construction?
No, that's not intent. The intent there was to make sure that there's space for multiple businesses on there because it's meant to advertise the city and that off-ramp location first, and the businesses that happen are located there.
Okay, I'd like to just suggest some text then. The sign shall identify the city, the off-ramp, and be able to identify at least five businesses. So the way I currently read it is those businesses must be on the sign. I didn't think that was the intent, but...
That's fine.
Okay. I had one more question. Under prohibited signs, animated signs, animated signs, I think they used to be called the wind-activated signs or something like that. Are we including flags in this? I didn't find flags anywhere.
No, flags are a separate category unto themselves.
Are they covered in this sign ordinance or are they covered in something different?
They, I believe actually that the definition of flag may have been omitted from this version, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Mona?
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry. Was there an answer? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The definition of flag was inadvertently omitted from this draft. However, it will not change from the existing definition provided in the city's code?
Okay, getting back to the question then, where are flags covered in the ordinance then? And are they allowed then as Ikea? I'm thinking of Ikea as a business that has a flag with their name on it, therefore I'm sure, I'm not sure if that's considered a sign.
Ordinarily, we do consider a sign, a flag with a logo on it to be a sign, and generally they'll exceed the height limits, although I believe in the PD-45 where the IKEA's located, different provisions were established for that shopping center.
Okay. That was only an example. I realized they have a special case. I have some over by my house that have "R" on it. And that's, of course, residential, which is also covered under something else, but it is, it's still, I can't find where it's covered. And so I'm reading this, and I read this as flags are not allowed. So I'm not sure if that's the intent.
Yeah, in our existing ordinance, flags are covered under the exempt signs, and this refers specifically to flags that are of, you know, state flags, other, you know, political, you know, political subdivision-type signs. So that's how we interpret flags, you know. So if someone wants to put up an American flag or a California flag, you know, that's not a, as long as it doesn't exceed the height limit for the zone, then it's an exempt sign. However, we've always applied this, that if the flag goes up with a US flag at the top and a McDonald's flag at the bottom, then that makes it a sign and therefore not permitted.
I'm sorry, and therefore not permitted?
Well, they would need to take the McDonald's flag off as an, use this as an example only, of course.
Okay, so just, I'm sorry, to drag this one out.
You promised you know that, don't you?
I think I may be able to answer your question, Commissioner Lebig. If you look at section 1733.040A, it provides that any sign that is not expressly prohibited is allowed, provided that the sign complies with this chapter. Therefore, flags, once the proper definition is included in the draft ordinance again, would be allowed.
That's, thank you. That's what I was looking for.
All right. Any other comments? I had one I mentioned to Steve Rikle the other day, and there's a phrase in here that's older actually than Charlie. It's a little outdated, if you can believe it. On page seven, 17.33.040, in B, it talks about, well, I'll just read it, "City-owned structure or sign erected for the purpose of directing or warning traffic or on any telephone, telegraph, or electric light pole." We don't have any, we don't have any telegraph poles any longer.
Are those gone?
And actually, if you look on page 12, or, excuse me, on page 14, at the bottom of the page K, it talks about signs placed on utility poles, and utility poles is really the term that would be best suited for that. And I would suggest in our action tonight that we change the words "any telephone, telegraph, or electric light pole" to "utility pole."
Right, we talked about that one earlier, and we're in concurrence that that change should be made.
But I know that Sandra has done a lot of work on this, and it's very easy to understand now with the definitions of the, the changes that were made are very helpful to me, anyway, and I appreciate the work that she's done.
Well, in addition to the work Sandra's done, Mona is actually really the, one of the primary offers of the changes to the sign ordinance, so she should also express her appreciation to her work.
And we'll be seeing that temporary signs in a couple of months, it looks like.
Yes.
All right. So I'm looking for some action on item six, which would be, well, we don't have anybody in the public, should I open the public hearing anyway? I'll open and close the public hearing since there's nobody here. All right. And looking for that action.
I'll move the recommended action with the discussed text changes.
All second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 In the opposition, seen none. Motion carries. Any items of discussion?
Make a motion.
Sandine is ill tonight, and we hope she gets better soon, and we won't be seeing her on the third, but the 17th, we do have a meeting scheduled.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Motion to adjourn. Need adjourn.